Thank you all for being here tonight for our regular council meeting, August tenth, twenty seventeen. We will call this meeting to order as Mr. Bandit here with us. Before he sit down. Don't sit down. Don't sit down. You'll come and lead us in our invocation, please. If you would, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to this matter of all week. Thank you all for another beautiful day of all week. Thanks for watching over each one of us. And God watch over the council in the merit of seeking to order. Make the city in this matter of God. Thank you for everybody's come out. Watch over them all in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Place the flag, please.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
We can have the roll call, please. Here.
Councilor School.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Elton.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
City Manager.
Here.
City Attorney.
Here. The first item that we have before us is the consent agenda. I trust everyone has had an opportunity to review the minutes from the July twenty-seventh call meeting, as well as the agenda work session and regular council meeting in the same date. And there is also the declaration surplus property. We have a motion in regard to the consent agenda. Motion approved. We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
There is a second. We have the roll call, please.
Councilor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. If you are a resident or business owner here in the city of East Ridge, have a common question or concern you'd like to bring to the council, now would be your opportunity to do so. So come to one of the two microphones here at the front, state your name and address for the record. You will have five minutes. If you have one who's signed in at least, we'll give you... All right, Mr. Temple. John Temple, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. It's brief.
And, I'm sorry, John Temple, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, South Mission Oaks Drive, East Ridge, Tennessee.
I just wanted to make an announcement that I was...
Can you push the button at the bottom of the microphone in a little place?
Is that better?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I want you to know that Jones Memorial is celebrating their forty-second consecutive barbecue, and it'll be September ninth, about a month. And I'll have tickets, and Brian is a member, he'll have tickets. Probably Jackie has tickets, but anyway, we can get your tickets just as quick as anybody. But they're unique. When I joined the church, I learned they do a unique thing. They raise as much as they can, they raise as much money as they can, and then they buy coats to all the needy children at Spring Creek and East Ridge Elementary, and maybe there's a few other people along in there. But last year, we bought a hundred and seventy coats, and you know, second, third grade, they grow like weeds, and so they use them. And the pastor goes to the church, schools, and they get counts on how many second grade, third grade, and so forth, and then they take them over, and when they come in about November, December, and so that's the primary use of our money. So, let me see, what else I wanted to tell you here? The, as I said, it's a barbecue. We have, you'll get, if you buy a ticket, you'll get the red, white, and blue tickets. The blue ticket is the, is the large barbecue, it's eight dollars, but you get, you can have beef, pork, or chicken, and you get drinks, and vegetables, along with the rest of the stuff, so that's available. The middle class is just sandwiches, sort of like getting a Big Mac or something, it's five dollars, but it's still very good with the barbecue. And then they have outside, they'll have a trailer with barbecue frozen. You can buy it by the pound now, if you want to buy it by the pound and take it home or eat it later. So that's available to you. Most of you have eaten there at one time or another. I know Esther has, and Brian has, and you have, and Jackie has, and Langer has, so most of you are familiar with it, and we appreciate it very much, supporting us. As I say, we raise it for a reason, raise the money for a reason. Let's see, the women, I didn't mention them. They sell baked goods, so not only can you buy a barbecue, but then you go over to the women and buy a slice of pie or cake or something. It's going to start at ten o'clock in the morning on September the ninth, and it'll be finished at six that evening, close down. Let's see, what else? I think that's about all the announcement was going to cover. Are there any questions? Anybody? Does anybody not know where Jones Memorial is? I think most people do. It's just right up here a little ways with a real tall, I don't know what you call those things.
Staple?
Staple. Real tall staple. Thank you.
John?
Yeah.
Mick, you got a bit of a student? Did you all just use the two of these three square students?
Uh-huh.
Or you go outside of East Ridge?
We don't go out of East Ridge, as far as I know, unless it's, we just haven't access or something. But mostly, that's what it's for. So, okay, thank you very much. We will try to host some flyers out here for future meetings, and put the date and the time and so forth, if the commission allows to do so.
It's a longstanding tradition. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
They did have a big walk.
They do, oh yes.
All right. Good.
Yes.
You happen to remember how much we dropped last year through the city?
I don't remember offhand. I'm sure we could probably find that easy enough in the minutes.
Hopefully, the park is sizable, man, if it's any way possible.
We could probably arrange for that. All right. Our next individual is Charles McCullough, one sixty-five Cecil Lane. Good to have you with us.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, and Mr. Miller in particular, for not using the abrasives to cure these poverty taxes this year. It sort of feels like we're the all-queen city in Templeton County that didn't. Chattanooga in particular, the truck of all, although it's trying to work in ten percent high quality, same kind of economy, the tax cut, and I just wanted to thank you all for wanting to be honest about it, and to fiscal responsibility, and so I want you all to know that people do notice those things, and they do make a difference. My wife and I are looking to move pretty soon, and we actually decided to stay in East Ridge rather than leave the city, partially because of that, because we know how this was handled and shows us that we can trust how the systems are. So, anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that very much. All right. Communication. Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot. Do we have anyone else? I'm sorry, that was my fault.
Derek Shiprue, six-one-one-six, not a gun drop. I'm just going to bring up another car show is going to be down at the arena Saturday. It's Children's Miracle Network. It's an annual charity car show, it's twelve, entry fee for vehicles, ten dollars. There'll be trophies handed out at three, registration starts at nine, and let's see, there'll be games, inflables, music, concession, more, fun for all ages. That looks about all that's on there, but the money's going to go, I'll proceed, will go to the Children's Hospital in Chatham, Tennessee. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else? Okay, let's see now. Communication from council members. Mr. Cagle, do you have anything for us?
Other than finding the strip department, that's here, those two problems we had over here in Marlboro, have not been able to see yet to get out around the stop sign. We're going to do a share of problems.
Very good.
I'd also like to thank the strip department. We had a land that was, we didn't have buses to go down the road this morning, and they came out, done it in the spot, and took it down, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Yes, one of the things I wanted to mention was the Jones barbecue. Mr. Temple took care of that for me, appreciate that. But do come out and support us, we do put the money back into our children's cause and important during the year. The other thing is, we do have, I want to thank the city and the city employees in the park and rec for their help with assisting in their Corvette club, or classic car show we had last Saturday, it was a very good turnout, and it was very successful, and all their proceeds go to the children's charity child fund and to Children's Hospice, so they donate all those proceeds back to the community. But then we had, I'd like to keep the Chuck Rolls's family in prayers. He is a longtime member of Jones, he passed away last Friday, so keep Mary's wife and his children and family in almsg prayers as long, as well as Mr. Duncan, which is one of our firefighters, Jeff Duncan's father passed away. So keep Jeff and his brothers, sisters, and their family in almsg prayers as well.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Clint Ustleton for coming out to my house the other night in Marlboro, went off, I feel very excited. Thank you.
All right. Well, I have a couple of things. One, it was an excellent car show this past weekend. It was, we had the opportunity, I took my kids over there, and we looked at the cars, and a lot of great cars there. After that, we slid over to the Bass Car Shop, and they had second annual check-up barbecue competition, and so we loaded up on ribs, pulled pork, and everything else. It was a good one-two punch there Saturday afternoon, so that was great. Also, we want to recognize and say thank you to someone who's in the audience tonight, Peter Yekowicz. He graciously has donated a thousand dollars to the city of East Ridge for the purpose of improving Pioneer Frontier Park, and we are greatly appreciative of that. Yes, sir, please do.
My wife and I at least send out presents to East Ridge, but a little over twenty years ago, we decided to start a little engineering company to hopefully promote the welfare and sustainability of infrastructure for our clients, and it turned out that East Ridge was one of our very first clients. And at that time, you all were having some difficulties with rain, and stormwater, and things like that, and we worked side by side with the city, and it was a big help to us in launching our company, and we were very grateful for that, and so we have a special affection for the city of East Ridge. But beyond that, my wife and I have always had a passion for children, and so I had a meeting with council member Helen about where would be the best place to help the city of East Ridge, with in mind that helping the children, and she mentioned that there was a need for perhaps a splash pad at Pioneer Frontier Park, and so she, you know, that might be a good place to do it. I remember playing in the water, and that was kind of my business anyhow, and so that would be very appropriate for us to help out with that, so we were pleased to do that, and we're looking forward to having a ribbon cutting when it finally comes about, and where my grandchildren are there. I know a granddaughter who just loved it, so really, just thank you to the city of East Ridge for things you've done for us in the past, and we can remember.
Thank you, sir. Needless to say, very kind of thing. We're very grateful. What's that?
That's very smart.
I'm good, that's fine. I get to, I guess I'll be the tester, and make sure that the splash pad functions correctly or anything, I'll get out there first. Now, I'm also going to be, what, first or second on the zip line? I can't remember.
You're second, I'm first.
You're first, okay, that works.
You don't qualify to be first.
If my wife married that time, I'll be third.
There you go.
We'll make sure we got to be all part. Thank you.
It's good to, although obviously, we're very serious about conducting through business, it's always good to be able to laugh, and to have fun. Scripture says, "Laughter doeth good luck in medicine," and so when you have something that ails you, it's good to be able to laugh. All right, well, that's all. What do you have, Mr. Miller? Do you have?
The only item I have, I'd like to call it Stumbarton or Park Recreation Record for an announcement.
If y'all hear any wheezes, I'm fighting them on you. Mr. Temple, I don't know if you met the, Brian, if y'all do this or not, but amen brother on the banner jackets, and same way in the back for our donation, amen brother on that too. Us Baptists do that every now and then, we get excited. I'm here tonight, basically, just real short, Ed Woodham and Matt Franklin, two names that have been very, very instrumental in East Ridge for many, many years. They wanted to put them on something up in East Ridge, and we talked with everybody up there about it. I said not everybody, we talked to a few people up there about it, including Tim James. We didn't want to mess with the field, because it's General Shakespeare, and Raymond James Stadium, and since there is another Raymond James Stadium, it's pretty popular in the United States, and just don't get rid of Raymond James Stadium, I love that. So we decided to name the whole facility that we own now, which is pretty cool, but we decided to name it the Matt Franklin, Ed Woodham Athletic Complex, well, Athletic Park, and I just want to make sure that y'all knew about it, because you're all about it just first game of the high school season, they're going to make a big deal out of it, and they're going to, you know, name the name, do all that stuff, so I didn't want y'all, since we were not meeting, I didn't want you to show up there and not know, or not show up, you need to be there.
September.
September sixth, isn't it?
Nine.
First Friday in September, or is it the second Friday?
Is it the eighth?
Eighth, September eighth, yes, September eighth. They play Northern Road three first thirty meetings.
They can play Raider on the eighth.
Yes, Raider. But thank y'all so much.
All right, thank you. Is there anything else? Do you have any?
No, that's it. Thank you, sir.
Okay, with that, we will proceed to full business. Item A, ordinance one zero four nine, on second and final read.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations in the zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at five-three-three-zero Ringel Road, tax map number one-six-nine-J-A-A-Zero-three-one from C-two General Commercial District to M-three Warehouse and Wholesale District.
Do we have a motion in regard to ordinance one zero five zero? Motion approved. Second. Have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Councilor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Elton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. Item is approved. Item B, ordinance one zero five zero, on second and final read.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations in the zoning map of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at five-three-three-zero Ringel Road, tax map number one-six-nine-J-A-A-Zero-three-one from C-two General Commercial District to M-three Warehouse and Wholesale District.
Do we have a motion in regard to ordinance one zero five zero?
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Elton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. Item is approved. Item B, ordinance one zero five three, on second and final read.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, setting the property tax rate in the city of East Ridge for the year two thousand and seventeen at the rate of one point three-three-eight-one for every one hundred dollars of assessed real property in the city of East Ridge, Tennessee.
Do we have a motion in regard to this ordinance?
Motion approved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions? Roll call, please.
Councilor School.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Elton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. That item is approved. Item F, ordinance one zero five four, on second and final read.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of East Ridge, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and seventeen, and ending June thirty, two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, we had several amendments that are noted in dying laws or fine structures. Agenda memorandum under dated August seventh, on the general fund, we added up the local auction sales tax seventy-seven hundred dollars because the computer services has increased from forty-eight to fifty-five-seven. That reflects on site visits from our library, right? So the revenues and expenditures are now increased seventy-seven hundred dollars from a budget that I presented to you two weeks ago. General fund now shows thirteen million, six ninety-one, nine hundred and three. Budget remains balanced. Under the grant fund, we add one hundred fifty thousand dollars for the beginning costs. This will be a two-year project, so the expenditures in the grant fund are now three million, three forty-one, seven nineteen. Revenues do not change. Under the capital improvement fund, loans and proceeds will change to five million, the streets and highways, line items change to seven million, one sixty-one, six sixty-nine. So the revenues are now six million, nine fifty-eight, seven eighty-nine, and the expenditure is seven million, nine thirty-eight, oh sixty-two. Fund balance will be used for excess expenditures, unanticipated expenditures. I should note that the budget does include in my proposed reclassification pay increases for several employees in this budget, as well as three percent cost of living increase for all employees, and revised organizational chart that goes along with the budget. The only change in that was, I'm sorry, there were two changes in that. Number one was replacing the captain position in the police department with a lieutenant position, and then changing the title of the building official to director of community services. So those two go along with the budget. I would entertain any questions you may have on it.
You know, we have ten vehicles in the budget.
How many?
Ten. Six of them going to be publics, and are the publics going to kind of price on them? Are they going to be ready to go? Stripe, radios, computers?
Well, we buy the vehicles, and then we have to get, we have to have the radios and all that transferred.
I'll tell you something, we have to pay for a couple of vehicles.
That has been factored in, it has not changed.
Yes, or no?
When we get our police purchases, they count as a package deal, striping, most of the equipment except for the special equipment such as computers themselves, video camera systems, things of that nature. You get the screen, siren, lighting package, a console, I think, yeah, the screen. The spotlight, things of that nature, that's all into the package. And then we have to put in things such as the video camera, we have to wear those and drop ship them to there. They put them in for us, which is included in the package, but we have to buy video cameras, so.
If you look into having a public's cars counted with the building...
structures. Agenda memorandum under dated August seventh, on the general fund, we added up the local auction sales tax seventy seven hundred dollars because the computer services has increased from forty-eight to fifty-five seven. That reflects on site visits from our library right. So the revenues and expenditures are now increased seventy seven hundred dollars from the budget that I presented to you two weeks ago. General fund now totals thirteen million, six ninety-one, nine hundred and thirty. Budget remains balanced. Under the grant fund, we add one hundred fifty thousand dollars for the beginning costs. This will be a two-year project. So the expenditures of the grant fund are now three million, three forty-one, seven nineteen. Revenues do not change. Under the capital improvement fund, loans proceeds will change to five million, the streets and highways line items change to seven million, one sixty-one, six sixty-nine. So the revenues are now six million, nine fifty-eight, seven eighty-nine, and the expenditure is seven million, nine thirty-eight, oh sixty-two. Fund ballots will be used for excess expenditures, unanticipated expenditures. I should note that the budget does include in my proposed reclassification pay increases for several employees in this budget, as well as three percent cost of living increase for all employees. And revised organizational chart that goes along with the budget. The only change in that was, I'm sorry, there were two changes in that. Number one was replacing the captain position in the police department with a lieutenant position, and then changing the title of the building official to director of community services. So those two go along with the budget. I would entertain any questions you may have on it.
You know, we have ten vehicles in the budget.
How many?
Ten. Six of them are gonna be publics. Are the publics gonna come? Price on them, are they gonna be ready to get striped radios, computers?
Well, we buy the vehicles and then we have to get, we have to have the radios and all that transfer.
I'll tell you something, we have to pay for a couple of vehicles.
That's been, that has been factored in, it has not changed.
Yes, or no? When we get our police purchases, they count as a package deal, striping, most of all the equipment except for the special equipment such as computers themselves, video camera systems, things of that nature. You get the screen, siren, lighting package, a console. Case, yeah, the screen per can. The spotlight, things of that nature, that's all into the package. And then we have to put in things such as the video camera, we have to work those and drop ship them to them. They put them in for us, which is included in that package. But we have to buy video cameras, so.
Have you looked into having the public's cars kind of with the built-in computer screen already in the car where you don't have to figure out where it mounted and where the publics put it over here in the dash?
Yeah, that's.
You know what I'm talking about?
I do know what you're talking about, yes.
Okay, now I've read an article on this today.
I've read that, that all cases built into the dash, the part of the problem is, is a lot of the country uses a little bit different stuff than we do. Some of our security features are just a touch different. We have to start shrewd much at ground level and come back again, but right now we can move the mount, change the mount, change the lower half of the mount to the Dodge rather than Chevrolet, and we're still recycling those parts and I'll have to buy them.
I just figured, I was wondering, too.
Now, next year, if things work next year, I may come to you and say, that's the way it's gonna have to be because I just found out in the last two days that the computer that we're using, Panasonic, has now put it in the obsolete category and they've upgraded it. Now, I'm trying to find out whether or not the mount top, what the computer logs into is any different than the one we have. If so, there might be some things there, but I just, I said, just to show myself out there.
I was just about to say, do that, sorry, speaking of.
And you can do everything from a steering.
Right, do we have a, a motion in regard to ordinance one zero five four? Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, are there any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Councilor Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Melton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes. And item is approved. Concludes whole business. Moving to new business. That's what I'm saying, yes, exactly. Under new business, if we could, let's move item C forward and deal with it first since our brief from Carter are here. Bill and Lisa. And if you wouldn't mind coming forward, just in case there are any questions or you wanna make any comments, they're welcome, too. Yes, please. Item A, or excuse me, item C, resolution two six eight zero.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, adopting and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Chattanooga Area Regional Transportation Authority, Carta, to provide transportation service for the City of East Ridge.
Yes, I'm, I'm ready to go through the proposed contract.
Um, yes, Mayor Council, as you know, we have to enable Carta to figure out how we are going to continue transportation in the City of East Ridge and what the immediate need is, which was paratransit service, that's age sixty-five and older and qualifying disabled. Carta will be handling all of the registration. We will have forms available here for the city, for citizens to pick up, in the library and at our reception desk, and also cards in case people need to call Carta for more information. We will be publishing that in the Hometown News that's coming out, this will be starting September first. Carta is also going to be training with anybody that starts the service. So if they're a little bit blurry about how it works, then Carta will walk them through it, bind with them, show them how it works, so that way the user is comfortable. It is a curb-to-curb or door-to-door service that is forty-eight hours in advance notice, runs Monday through Friday, seven AM to seven PM. So this would be great for not only doctor's appointments, the pharmacy, going to hospital, and also shopping in the area, in the Chattanooga area. So they could go to Hilton Place Mall, or they could go to Northgate Mall, or downtown Chattanooga, as long as they stay within the timeframe parameters. And of course, we will have information on our website, and then again, the Hometown News will have that information as well as to have sign up. And they do have to be pre-qualified, so they can't just start September one calling up to make an appointment, they have to go ahead and qualify through Carta. They have two different forms, one for seniors, one for the qualifying disabled, and Carta will handle all the paperwork there involved. The link in the city will be responsible for, is just disseminating the information and handing out applications.
Cost?
And the cost for right now, we have budgeted thirty thousand dollars. The cost to the citizen for a round-trip ride is five dollars for two fifty one way, if they're somewhere and need to get home, or vice versa. And to the city is fifteen dollars for a total of twenty dollars that will go back to Carta. They will get the five dollar or two dollar fifty payment from the citizen at the time of the service, and then we will be invoiced on a monthly basis.
My question. Can you see it, interpret each word?
Yes.
So my grandmother goes off up here to Hamilton Place, and this thing's got a forty-eight hour thing, and all of a sudden she gets, I don't know how to say it, but lost. And then she has no way home from the route she went with, can she still call down without the forty-eight hour?
Yes, she can call, and we'll do the best we can to get her within a reasonable amount of time. We just don't wanna have that all come at one time, because we won't be able to accommodate the, anytime I think it needs any help like that, you know, just reach out close.
I ride in with my daughter to Hamilton Place, and I get ready to go home before she gets up to work, and I call in to ride home, so.
Well, not on a consistent, that would have to, no, you couldn't do that on a consistent basis, it would have to be scheduled. The original question was if there was an emergency or an issue like that, that would be different, but we won't be able to schedule everything that we need to schedule and do it in an efficient manner if we allow that to go on all the time, so.
So you could surely use the two, two vehicles to start, one in eleven, care of the other?
No, we're gonna use what we need to use to, to be able to handle the service, so, you know, and a lot of it will be rallying together, so if four people call and they wanna be in one place within, you know, within heart bar of each other, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna tweak the schedules so that we can get on board them at once, so there'll be some efficiencies that way. So it could be one, two vehicles, it could be, we have a couple smaller vehicles that we're gonna be utilizing depending on the need and the demand at the beginning, and then some of our regulated kind of vehicles that we'll also be using.
And also, Mayor Council, we are in the process of applying for a CMAC grant that would cover not only this program, but another on-demand type service for the general public as well.
Would you be more to what Councilmember Cagle had talked about?
The fifteen hours that I was going to finish my trip.
Yes.
So seven fifty one way, you have to see.
Right.
Four fifty one.
Yes, and the customer is two fifty.
We just go ahead and give the round trip, 'cause not a lot, there's not gonna be a whole lot of just one-way trips, so we just figure it out for them.
I suppose I thank you again, I'm very excited. I'm gonna hire her, I'm gonna hire her, man, she'd be great, I don't say anything.
Oh, I did forget when I stayed, not only for all the other places, but I remember someone saying about jobs, you know, I think they can schedule, you know, as long as they know forty-eight hours in advance. There was a lady that had a disabled daughter that didn't get to a job, as long as it's in the Chattanooga area between hours of seven AM, seven PM, that'd be accommodating.
And they can schedule up to two weeks ahead of time, so it's not just the minimum of forty-eight hours, they can schedule two weeks, two weeks ahead of time, too.
But they need to go every day, like.
They can set that up, they can set that up as they call like a standing order, so they can set up, you know, that you have to be working every day, they can set that up so they don't have to keep calling in.
Fantastic. Do we have a motion in regard to resolution two six eight zero? We have a motion and a second to approve? Are there any questions or comments? We have the roll call, please.
Councilor Stoll.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Dex, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
You don't like that one?
Yes.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you. It is a wonderful thing to be in this board.
Thank you.
We're grateful. All right. Let's backtrack, if we can, to item A, resolution two six seven eight.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, awarding a bid for construction of the easel buildings rechanged I seventy five Ringo Road, reconfiguration project.
The low response of bid was CW Matthews Contracting Company, out of four bids, the city received open on August first. That bid came in at five billion, seven hundred fifty-three thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars, four cents. Juan Melton, the engineer of record, reviewed the bid, done the apparent low bid, be responsive to the appetite of bids, instructions to bidders, recommended to TOT last week that they be considered for a war. We received on Monday notification from TOT that they concur with CW Matthews Contracting Company as the lowest response bidder for the X project. Therefore, we are allowed this time to make the official order of the board, CW Matthews Contracting, about five billion, seven fifty-three, five sixty-five, oh four. That's one part of the motion, once that motion is, once this resolution is completed, then I need to receive authorization to proceed with funding vehicle on this project. And that one, looking term to. Last page. Which is the reconfiguration project. Which talks about revenue and expenditures. Trans appropriations we have for this project. TOT, one point five million, half million from Hamilton County, half million from East Ridge, total two point five million. Expenditures, both hard and soft cost dollars for the lowest response of bidder, CW Matthews added, makes this project a total of seven million, one sixty-one, six hundred sixty-nine dollars. By the two point five million revenue we have for that leaves us a shortfall, four million, six sixty-one, six sixty-nine, it's necessary to be able to proceed with this project. If all the paperwork's ready to submit to the Tennessee Department of Revenue, I have to receive approval from the Revenue Commissioner pursuant to the provisions of the border region act, before we can actually go through the formalization of the resolutions to, to bond this project with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. I'm proposing that, that the amount that we borrow will be four point nine million, add several hundred thousand dollars in there as a contingency. We are dealing with underground work, where things underground have been there for fifty-plus years, and I'm not sure what we could dig up, or what we could find that we need some form of change for. It's different when you're building something new on a piece of ground, because everything's brand-new. When you start digging things up, especially when the northbound ramp and then the new northbound ramp are being excavated, if we come upon anything, I don't wanna have a shortfall borrowing exactly what we need. I wanna have some money, because if you don't, it's gonna have to come from the fund balance, and I'd rather have these extra dollars. Extra dollars here, if we do have any extra dollars after the project, we certainly can apply that for the beautification project, which is also a border region project that we'll be looking at for X. So, the resolution before you, tonight, we'll award it to CW Matthews Contracting Company. I can put them on formal notes tomorrow morning, that they have imported the bid. After that triggers his, the pre-construction meeting scheduled for August twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, not split fight on that yet. Once that meeting is conducted, we can get work started out there as soon as possible. Contractor event conversation's up, they're ready to start. So, between now and next week or so, they'll be getting the logs together, the insurance forms, and getting everything correct, so we can get this project better way. Dirt term is the key on this one. And I also need your approval on, after this resolution, to start the process of moving on borrowing four point nine million dollars.
You grow this all in?
No, I would rather not. Resolution isn't a board, this is just, this, to go to, to, to proceed with the four point nine millions, it's simple, this has to come back to you anyway. The only reason I'm asking for the four point nine right now is I have to send this a letter off to the Department of Revenue tomorrow morning, it's already drafted, once you approve it, I can send it out tomorrow. Asking for approval on the four point nine, and then I have to provide an amortization schedule for this. Now, proposing that the dollars come from the city border region district, the debt service on this for twenty-year bonds, three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars a year. So that has to be approved by the Revenue Commissioner. That's what I, that's imperative, that's required, so. That's the reason why I need this, and once I get his approval, I'll schedule the next meeting, after hopefully, the September twenty-fourth meeting, or whatever, that second meeting in September is, for the resolutions to go forth with the transaction with the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund to be able to obtain funds. Now, it'll take about twenty-five days afterwards, it's a twenty-day day, appeal process required by law, so the funds will become available to the city first, second week in October. Really not gonna have the first draw on this project till the bill's again off to revenue. So I'm cutting where I need to cut it. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
The half street, my canoe, takes a cut up there, stops at forty-one highway, turns left, goes across the bridge. How far are they gonna ask for, are they gonna ask how far away up to the bridge? Tell us, apart that bridge, we have got it. Bad, bad, bad.
I know that, and we hope that.
So we're not gonna have any trouble when they start construction?
No.
And that follow in or?
We're gonna ask that, that's not part of the construction project.
I know, but I.
But I'm gonna ask that be addressed during the construction process.
Like you said, it's been a long, long time.
I know that.
Calvin's perfect.
It could, it could, you, you bet, when you start some of the dirt packing, you're putting up, you're taking out all of the northbound, I'm sorry, the ramp from Ringo Road onto I seventy-five north, that one existing today comes out, all the dirt under it, it's going to be moved slightly to the west. Following, so when all that dirt is being tampered down, pat down by their rollers, yes, you don't know what's gonna happen with dirt around it. So right now, we're getting ready to start work on the pipe bursting of that asphalt VCP gravel sewer line, so we can get that in place before we start any kind of earth moving out there, so we don't have that problem with the fractures in that existing line getting larger. That is been, that's been a complaint I've heard, is that wrong?
Oh, it is.
I know it is.
Yeah.
Especially with the right lane, the left, left lane's not as bad.
The right lane is terrible. You can feel it out a little Volkswagen car down to us.
That's three hundred and seventy-eight thousand more coming out of our border regions.
Yes, sir.
All right, we do not yet have a motion in regard to this resolution.
There's a question. Start construction as soon as possible, we need to spell commission. I know we were trying to shoot for, for holidays, but.
Oh, no, 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 no. The completion of this entire project is going to be probably seven months, when you talk about everything, what we're going to, what this project entails is the opening of Camp Jordan Parkway off of Ringo Road by the end of November. Okay? We may not have all the curbing or the sidewalk in, but we will have an asphalt base down, but that road is open by the end of November. Do all the plantings and everything else, the speedlights and all that bit, that's what they'll take. The primary issue is to be able to get to northbound, the off-ramp. The primary issue is to be able to get to northbound, the off-ramp, reconfigure traffic signal up, the poles are, our poles have been delivered, and asphalt base down so that we have Camp Jordan Parkway connected to Ringel Road. By the way, I should empty the, all of the contractors, we had a pre-bid meeting on this, and this was one of the things that we pushed very hard, that road has to be open asphalt wise by the end of November. So, there are some daisies that have been switched around, but they're aware of it. C.W. Matthews is aware of it, and they're ready for it. No question to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, Resolution two-six-seven-eight. If you have any additional questions, we'll come. Roll call, please.
Ms. Fairstool.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayla.
Yes.
Councilmember Milton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Item is approved. Would also like to have a motion in regard to the...
Borrowing the four point nine, start the process of borrowing four point nine million dollars.
Second.
A motion to approve and a second. Are there any additional questions about that? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fairstool.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayla.
Yes.
Councilmember Milton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Item is approved as well. Item D, Resolution two-six-seven-nine.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the mayor to execute contract for Southeast Tennessee Development District to provide professional grant management services in regards to the transportation alternatives program grant.
I'm going to have a man speak to the technical parts of this. This is the third multimodal, second multimodal grant, long TAP grant that we have, so we'll be doing some streetscape amenities. This one takes it from John Ross to Kingswood Drive, Lumberly Lane. We already have one from John Ross to Tomrus, and then one from Tomrus to McBryant, so...
Side direction, then we have two TAP, sorry.
Two TAPS?
We have two TAP grants. This is the second one.
Okay.
It's called phase three. We actually got a little bit backwards with our phases because we originally applied for the first TAP grant first as the first phase, and then we applied for a multimodal phase, which went from Tomrus to Bellwood, and we received it first. So, two became four, one, so forth. So, this one will take us, like the city manager said, from John Ross to Kingwood, Lumberly Lane. We were awarded, the entire amount that we asked for was nine hundred ninety-eight thousand, uh, it's seven-one-one and twenty-eight cents.
Twenty thousand, forty-five.
So, large number, but that is only through construction. Just like our first TAP grant, we are required to bear the hundred percent of the cost for the NEPA phase, which is the letters that go out to different agencies, making sure that there are no issues with us, with our construction project, the design phase, which is designing the project, and right-of-way phase, and the purchase of any right-of-way that's needed for the project. However, with the border region and that, since this is in the border region, we can turn those funds in, if I'm not mistaken, by its director of laws, that we can turn that in as a hundred percent for reimbursement on border region. And also, with the great management contract that you have for each night, you can turn that in as well for a hundred percent of the border region funds to turn that back in. So, the contract, Southeast Development District is managing, this would be the third project on Ringel Road that they're managing, they're managing the original TAP grant, the multimodal, even safer routes to school, which is partly on, it's on Bellwood, and kind of crosses over Ringel Road to John Ross. And then, of course, this TAP grant is what we're asking for. And then the amount is thirty-five thousand dollars, which is actually half of their normal six percent fee of the total grant. I think they're like looking with us.
Do we have a motion in regard to this resolution? Two-six-seven-nine. Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve? Are there any questions or comments, Council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fairstool.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayla.
Yes.
Councilmember Milton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Thank you, Council.
Item is approved. Thank you. And we will move to item D, Authorization to Contract of Planner or Architect to a Master Plan McBryant School Site.
Okay, the last agenda work session of July twenty-seventh, I presented to the council some ideas in regard to establishing a town center for the Bryant School area and bringing traffic department, street department up there, animal control, building outside, regulation basketball court with a cover, as a pavilion that built to have multi-uses as a farmer's market, special venues, you could flood it, use it as an ice skating rink as a basement. Down at Coca-Cola headquarters in Atlanta here, at least they did the nineties out in downtown area, I don't know if they do that now. Anyway, I have locked that site, had some conversation with some of the council members up here, and I don't think we're going to be able to fit all that up here. So, I, what I'm looking at is, is taking the, the traffic unit and the street unit, leaving them where they are. With the development of the new playground and splash pad, that's going to necessitate additional parking. When we do a regulation basketball court or multi-use facility, that's going to necessitate parking and for both users and visitors. Talking with our, one of our recreation or athletic supervisors, he's mentioned that he's had a lot of demand for tournament basketball, play, tournament basketball games being held there. Apparently, I guess our gym is not large enough.
No, sir, it's, once you get past about ten, it's too small.
Okay, so, anyway, this would be a regulations one out there. Be used as the farmer's market again on, on weekends, special venues, concerts, get-togethers, gatherings, weddings if you want. But I still need to have services of a master planner or architect to come in, and with the software programs they have today, they can play around with different models to show you what it looks like. There's a lot, I, I need somebody to assist us in, in staff to come up with some ideas to present to you, because there's a lot of uses out there that could be looked at. When you're looking at Bryant School, I've talked to individuals who have actually went to school there over the years, some of the police and firemen have said that building is very structurally sound. Maybe we need to, to keep forces up, maybe we need to keep the, the auditorium area because that's heavily utilized, you can't really duplicate that, you have a gym over there. The back park cafeteria area could be sectioned off and used around, control animal control up there, get them out of the floodway. So, you'll have a lot of uses that we could utilize that for, putting it all together. But I'm asking for you to go out and look at contracting services of, again, an architect or planner to help us in doing a conceptual design, to make it make sense as a town center, not just all put together. Make it, make it, make it look like it has functional, operational, aesthetic, paint
Sounds like a great idea to me. I think it's a good idea to try to deutilize that property to its greatest potential use. Do we have a motion in regard to authorizing a contractor planner or architect?
It would have to come back to you if it's under, if it's over ten thousand dollars. I think a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve authorizing a, a contract, again, with the caveat that if it's over ten thousand dollars, it has to come back here to council for approval.
I would definitely like to see us, but we have a little chill in that, in that area.
That, that has to happen because what they have down there is not adequate, it's, it's size does not reflect the number of dogs we have in the city. We have an awful lot of animals in the city. And also, we got to get them out of the flood area. That's not, that's not happening. So, there's no reason why you can't bring them up here. Get them in. Get them into the overall plan.
So, I know you, you had mentioned, we talked earlier this week, that you had mentioned before about letting, moving the fireplace also in there to until that building...
I thought about, I thought about that, and that may not be the way to go. That's why I want, I want an architect to take a look at that building. If we do move the fire over there, the cost is, the cost would skyrocket on that one. The fire department, right now, I know they're, I know they're bulging at the seams, which you got to understand that there's two squads operating out of the fire department. Once Fire Station Number Two is opened, have them up there, or transfer over to Station Two.
And then there's the police.
What I was thinking about is there, I was talking to the police chief, and there's a possibility of moving the CID and possible records from the police department over to McBryant School. That would open up more room in the police department, in the patrol division, and have no training room. Upstairs, again, I want to get the architect to take a look at that, could be utilized when we need any training rooms.
One of the things I hear a lot is that we don't have an abundance of meeting space here. When you look at the, at the elementary schools, when they do functions, they many times go outside of East Ridge to have two functions that are nicer kinds of events because there's just not a lot to choose from.
The other part of it, too, Councilman Stool, is we have a tower there that we'd have to relocate, and if we leave it there, we lose the revenue stream that we get on it. I don't necessarily want that to happen. What I, what is going to dictate where everything goes is I know that you need the basketball court, splash pad, recreation center, bring animal control up, you need to have enough parking to be able to serve all those functions and traffic circulation. So, moving the fire department over, they're going to lose that access to Redfield on Ringel Road. So, how do I get them out of the busy size? That's a concern that has come up, too. So, I just need some help in those areas to put together, make it make sense, and I can accommodate those recreational uses as well when we need animal control.
Top of our architect, did we, top of that, any more traffic from this onto East Ridge avenue?
Yes.
Sounds like that a lot of attitude in the twelve, right?
Yes. I think that most, most of the traffic has got to come out on the tops. There's a traffic spill off there. Yes, I, I totally agree with you on that.
Because there is a road back there.
I know.
It's good.
I know, I know. I want to use that as an emergency. You always want to have two access roads into a town square or an area of seven acres, but that would not be the primary entrance way. I will commit the primary entrance way to be off the tops.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? We can have roll call, please.
Ms. Fairstool.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayla.
Yes.
Councilmember Milton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
Item D, Authorization to seek request for qualifications for engineering services for Streetscape Project from West Ringel Road, Lumberly Lane to South Seminole.
That's approximately one mile, and I'm proposing that Streetscape Project be designed and ultimately, ultimately constructed for that one-mile area. The project would include sidewalks, ADA ramps, utility relocations, street lights, curb and gutter range improvements, specifically drainage improvements. Just to give you an idea, do you know how much fall there is from our borough to the tunnels to South Seminole? Look at change in elevation is on that. Take a guess.
Fifty-two miles.
No, tough about feet, tough about... So, one hundred and sixty-six foot drop, one hundred and sixty-six foot drop from South Seminole to Marlborough. Pete knows that. And the drainage is going to have to be taken care of because that's the water, the water in Rapid there. So, we've got to do something to that. We've got some outfalls there that are hanging on, it could be here easily collapse, so I don't want that to happen. So, this would be a project that I would request from the city to concentrate on. I would like to collect, solicit, request for qualifications for consultant engineering services, since this would be funded by the border region sales tax dollars, it's not a T.O.T. or a federal project, does not need to go through all this pre-NEPA and environmental and all that other stuff, and the same engineering firm, we'd be with Reon Board, do the design as well as the construction, engineering inspection services. So, right now, I would like to go forth with the first phase of this to bring on an engineer and start on the design, and all has to come back to the city council before we can go out on, for construction. To do something like this right away, we're probably talking about six to eight months to get some design plans, and by when we're ready to go out the bid. When this is completed, if we go forth with this project, we will have done Streetscape from South Seminole to McBryant Road. The only stretch we have not done is from McBryant to I seventy-five. That stretch can be done in the future with multimodal and TAP grants that we, that the man's office will keep continuing to apply for every year.
It's about two and a half miles of route, South Seminole to McBryant.
Yes, right.
That's, that's pretty incredible.
But I'm looking at, if you driven out to, driven out west, to the West Ringel Road lately, you're going to notice that there's a lot of empty businesses. We need to do something to stimulate some economic change, an economic delta, revitalization of that, that to business core. This will help do it.
It's like right over at Webber, where Kingwood is.
You bet.
On Kingwood side, Kingwood's side, not...
I know. Well, it's going to be tough to do some of this. We're going to have a lot, there's going to be a lot of diligent engineering done on this. And I'll talk to several engineers that, who have a good working knowledge of Ringel Road, and certainly their expertise would be an asset to the city, bring them on board for this project.
Do we have a motion in regard to this authorization to seek request for qualifications for engineering services? Motion, please. Have a motion and a second. Do we have any other comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Fairstool.
Yes.
Councilmember Kayla.
Yes.
Councilmember Milton.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Fairleigh.
Yes.
And item is approved. The final item on our agenda is going to be approval of a change order for Fire Station Number Two.
I know you don't like change orders, I don't either, but this is to bring power from EPP's pole into the Fire Station Number Two. We had two choices on this one, one's... One choice was to do a pad-mounted transformer. Second one was to run the wire off of the transformer on the pole. This, the cost associated with this change order to J&amp;J contractors is four thousand eight hundred fifty-three. What we're going to do on that one is, is take the power underground to the pole, take it up the pole to the transformer. That pole sits on the southwest corner of the property. Comparison purposes, if we were to set a new pad-mounted transformer, the cost would be fifty-three hundred dollars. And we'd be making that check paid to EPB to do that. So instead of going up with a better option, we're gonna create fifty-three. So that's the change order, this is what goes to the contractor.
What is the completion date currently?
I wanna say probably the end of September. One thing that we're going out for bids right now, we have bid opening on, I believe from tomorrow, big eighteen. We need to open bids for replacement of the asphalt pavement to the front station number two. We are calling for eight inches of concrete because you can't, those trucks are gonna pull into St. Thomas and they're gonna back up into those bays. Turning radius of those tires and the weight of those trucks will tear asphalt apart. It's torn apart now. We need to put away eight inches of concrete to open call. That money will come out of our, our state road fund. And then whatever balance we have left, we'll do road resurfacing for the city for this year. But that's scheduled to come probably at the beginning of September. So with the dovetail, we gotta get that done. They're gonna be far in the front, I'd say probably towards the end of August. So I'm looking at about October first, should be completed. It's coming along good well. The outside's pretty well taking some form. The insides are, are touching some.
Pretty good.
I have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Talk to the cost itemization sheet.
Yes.
On the material side here, it goes down one thousand one hundred two dollars sixty-four cents. We are tax exempt, correct?
Yes.
So plus do they add one dollar ninety-nine cents sales tax?
They have to pay sales tax. If we buy the materials, we don't have to pay sales tax. I'd have to find out whether those materials were bought. Just like the pipe in the, in the poles that we bought, if they're bought by the contractor, the contractor cannot use our sales tax exemption. The only way we get sales tax exemptions is if the city of East Ridge buys and supplies.
So provide one thousand one hundred dollars worth of material, you're gonna charge the sales tax for it. Provide this for J&amp;J Construction. Equipment side. Centering there, four hours at forty-five dollars. They come up three hundred twenty dollars, I come up with a hundred and eighty. One hour forty-five dollars, they got eighty dollars out there. Can do a four hundred dollar toll, I come up with two twenty-five.
The labor cost, okay, I understand with equipment floor, the unit is hours.
Forty-five hours an hour.
Yeah, I see that. I don't, that's gonna be, I'll have, I'll ask him about that.
You got one hour forty-five, or you put eighty out there.
Well, that, you don't put, that's not how you figure equipment. You don't fill your equipment by hours. I know. I know what you're saying. That's, I'll ask him about that, that you don't buy equipment for hours. Labor's done by hours. The labor's right.
We're renting those trucks for forty-five hours, I don't know. But anyway, the figures are wrong. Then over here in the paper part, come down here to seventeen hundred fifty dollars worth of labor. And they have thirty percent labor burden. I've never heard of the labor burden. So I come up with five hundred twenty-five dollars. They have that added up to twenty-two seventy-five. Then they added the material, equipment, and labor.
The labor, the labor burdens that the contractor adds on is, is overhead. This, this, this contract, this lightning electric is the contract.
Then they add ten percent overhead again. Then they add ten percent profit again on this twenty-two seventy-five labor. So we're getting a fifty percent labor surcharge there, which comes to a total of nine hundred eighty dollars, which comes a good little fifty percent of the original seventeen hundred fifty dollars worth of labor.
I'll ask him how, how, what about it.
How they figure it, how, you know, how you said the labor burden's overhead here, they're charging.
No, no, I said the labor, somehow the contractor puts his money in this. They get their, they get their, their overhead and their profit, which is twenty percent, which goes to lightning electric. Thirty percent goes to J&amp;J Construction. That's how I understand this. J&amp;J Construction is the sub, this is, is the general, this is the sub. I haven't heard of labor burden, but I believe that that, that thirty percent, I believe, I'll talk, I'll talk to J&amp;J more and I'll discuss with them. But that is what they get on every change order, which care with their overhead. That's why a lot of things that I've seen out there, that Mike has come to me and said, well, I'd like to, I need to change on this, I need to change on that. I said, we're not doing any changes. Wait till the building is done and paid for, the investment, additional fencing out there, we wanna do. I said, we'll do that ourselves. Because if I had J&amp;J do it, he's gonna add his own profit. This one here, lightning electric, that's their, I believe that twenty percent, ten, ten is to them. I'll check on that.
And normally, the burden, because I do this, the architecture company, that you, the fringes, the benefits of fringes and stuff, usually it's what the burden.
I, I, I know how, I know how they do it, yeah. I would say that a lot of times, the cost, if it was included in the original bid, would have been a little less overall. This one here, we were going to go with a pad-mounted, but that would have been more money. So try, try working to save something and do it. Try to get those put together. They weren't gonna come off the transformer, off of the, off of the pole, they didn't think they could do it.
This is also change for original scope, so was there not a, a payout or anything back to the original? This is a change in the original scope from above, so is this?
Right. This, the change is actually less money for the project, it's just through your payment.
No, but was this not included in the?
Yes, the pad mounted was included in the original scope. That's what, that's what I, that's what I was told by the architect.
I think, I think I see where you're going with that, that.
Because it says the new pad costs fifty-three, if we go with this alternative, it's forty-eight, but even once, an additional charge over the original scope.
Right.
That we get out and approved. But I didn't, but councilman.
Right. And somewhere, this was not accounted for.
Correct.
Upfront, at the outset of the project. Where we wouldn't have a, a change order to.
Correct.
Spend additional dollars at all.
If we would have paid, if we would have decided, correct, however, if we would have paid EPB, that would be a direct cost to them, fifty-three hundred dollars, and we wouldn't have been changing it.
Right.
And that's different, different companies, so I have authorization to go.
So it's, right, so, so really, this would be interesting to go back and see, you know, when we put the bid packages together, did we anticipate having to spend X amount to EPB for them to do it? And that's why the actual bid we received did not include anything.
That would have been, that would be questioned for the architect.
Right.
Yeah, kind of where I was.
We have some other descriptions with the architect too, we have, I think we're missing it, should have been there.
I'm not saying we haven't. I mean, I'm just, you know, the architect was selected before I came on board.
But it's kind of like, you know, you have to deal with those, get yourself ready, and just came up.
He admitted, he admitted that that was an error on his part because his, his specifications and drawings conflicted. That's true.
We don't really know what we see.
I understand that. That the decision, if you want to act with the architect for those dollars, that decision is the council's. Have I done it before? Yes.
At the, at the end of the process, we may need to go back and calculate all the change orders.
Exactly.
And just see where that takes us.
This hasn't been, I've had, I've worked with architects on other buildings that have been worked. So he's done, he's done a good job of, of some, some little tweaks here and there, have been added more when we turn around and done some changes that would offset those. And I'm fine with those. So total does go away.
Considering there, that some of the figures, as Mr. Cagle pointed out, were a little fuzzy, that we couldn't see on paper how they, how they add up. Would it be prudent to, at this point, approve a change order for fire station number two not to exceed four thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars? So if they go back and recalculate.
That's fine.
They come up with the numbers that we come up with, that number drops a little bit.
We can do that, that's fine. Just so the council's aware, I've already approved this. Just wanna let you know, this decision had to be made and I didn't want a week to go by. They needed power and I couldn't hold up this project for power to get inside that building for a week. Some certain problems I've had on that is the fact that I don't want it to pay that project, that we see. But that's a good, that's a good adjustment to the motion, thank you.
It's like if you build a house without getting a contractor to do it. How am I ready to give my house price, tie them, oh, it'll give me lives to be used through?
Make you scratch your head a little bit.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the change order not to exceed four thousand eight hundred fifty-three dollars?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Are there any other questions or comments? We have your roll call, please.
Ms. Mearsville?
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle?
Yes.
Councilmember Yelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Fairleigh?
Yes. Out of misapproved, and we are at the end of the agenda. Thank you all for being here tonight. We have a great weekend, we'll see you next week.